We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bean.
Here.
Siebel.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Bean.
Here.
Siebel.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the resolution calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Approve the resolution calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Bean.
Yes.
Siebel.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
We had a request from Dottie Weir on the Water Board, representing the Water Board, to consider a council liaison to the Water Board. I thought it was an excellent idea, would possibly give us an insight into maybe some questions we have. Any thoughts on that?
I think it's a tremendous idea. You know, bring us back together. It's been a little rough the last year or so. And I think that, I think it'd be excellent. We can share thoughts, communicate, which hasn't been done for a while. So, I'd be all in favor of it.
Well, anybody else have any opinions on that?
I also think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I think considered to take that position, but I'm on the fence of that right now just for my ability to go to those meetings and the timeframe that they're held because of my regular day job.
So, that leads me to the next question. Does anyone want to do that position for a while?
Well unfortunately, it just says to consider, it doesn't say possible action. Can we go ahead and make that?
Yeah, we can.
I would make a motion that we set up a lay down officer between the Water Works and the City Council.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I guess I'd like to ask everyone to consider that, and if you feel like you have time.
Does it necessarily have to be somebody on the council?
Well, it might not have to be.
If you want to pass.
Yeah, if we can't get a council member, we certainly could have a community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could I say something?
Sure.
Could you please stand and state your address and your name, please?
Dottie Weir, 630 Dodge Street. This idea came about as a result of reading minutes from a Waterloo, Water Works Board meeting. And in it, they used the word liaison. So I contacted Scott Wienens, who's their vice chairman, and he said that this has been a place for them for years. And he feels like it's worked out well. I then contacted Dave Bosin, who's the city councilman who serves in that position, and he felt the same way. It's a non-voting position, appointed by the mayor and serves as a conduit between the council and the Water Works as, you know, pertains to mutual issues.
And I think that that's what makes it effective, it leaves the politics out of it.
And that's why it's, I think imperative that it be a council person, so that we get firsthand information. There's two instances recently that we would have really benefited from that. The first being, we were informed that we would need to participate in the startup cost of Eagle's Landing. And not knowing much about the project, it really caught us by surprise. And it's right that we participate in that and we, you know, we are going to. But it means that we're gonna have to rework some of our scheduled projects and revise our budget. So if we'd known a little bit about it in advance, it would have, it would have helped us. The other example is the online bill pay proposal from Tyler Technologies. We were continuing to research that, the information that they had given us in the webinars and meetings, only to find out that you guys had tabled it on your end. So here again, it would've saved us a little time and, you know, effort if we'd known about that.
And you almost had one picked at one time.
Yes. So, you know, we're back and forth, but it's, it's a partnership with you guys. So we really need to know where you're at as well as, you know, you knowing where we're at.
My feeling when we tabled it was that the council wasn't interested in participating in it because it was for the Water Board. That was my feeling at the time, and that's the reason that I voted to table it. I wasn't willing to spend the nineteen thousand dollars.
And I don't blame you.
Yeah.
But we, we then held up a bit because we thought we were working in tandem with the city and your, you know.
My feeling, nobody was gonna pay online for a dog license because you had to come down and get it anyway. Saying that's about all we have for bills. So, that was my, my feeling. I don't know how the rest of council felt when we tabled it, but that was my feeling, one hundred percent. And I also knew at that time you were almost ready to sign something. And a rug was kind of pulled off from underneath you.
Well, there's a couple, you know, there's a, there's a couple of good choices out there and we're continuing to work on it. But those are just examples of how important that we, as we think, to work with the city closer.
When, when do you typically meet?
The third Tuesday of the month at one o'clock here at City Hall.
Yeah, and that's probably the, the hangup for a few of the council members.
And I don't know that it would be absolutely necessary to be at every single meeting if, you know, if you couldn't make it because, you know, you're still a good source for us to go to, to ask, you know, about particular issues as they come.
I guess my question would be, not that I'm against it, but what's the difference of a liaison? Or are you just coming to us with issues and we talk as a council setting? And then the whole council knows about it at the time, concerns, questions, rather than having a visit maybe? I heard Jean say somebody, you had somebody picked out already and it's just come on the agenda? Is that what I'm understanding, said Jean?
I approached Lynn because I knew she worked from home, but, you know, anybody would be fine. Are you still working, Steve?
Unfortunately, well fortunately, yes.
Double edged sword there.
And it, it can be too.
If you're going to appoint him, Mr. Mayor, I, I would recommend Lynn, knowing her background and the fact that she's available. At least to get us off the ground and see how it works.
Well, I, you know, I don't want to appoint her against her will.
She's not ready to make that decision, she said.
Yeah.
It's a voluntary appointment, Jean.
I'm sorry?
It's a voluntary appointment.
I understand. But I also know on committee, she's very, very good.
I don't have that kind of power. Yeah. Well, let's just give it some thought. And somehow we can make it work, I think. One way or another, I think it's an excellent idea.
Thank you for considering it.
The next item is to consider my resignation from fourth ward council position. Do we need a motion on that or just it's?
Not really.
Just a rubber stamp?
It's just accepting it.
Yeah.
I vote no.
Alright, well, I don't know how we're gonna work that out. Hopefully we don't get a second. So then.
Before you go on, Dick, I would like to thank you for almost twenty years of serving on the city council.
Yeah.
I know that.
Almost twenty-four years.
Yeah. I know, almost twelve years of serving with you has been a lot of good ideas traded across the table.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been kind of interesting.
Can you tell us why you're leaving us? Can you give us an idea why you're leaving us?
He's mayor now.
It's none of our business, that's fine, but why?
He's mayor now.
He's mayor now?
I, I was appointed.
So you're not leaving us, you're gonna be that position?
That's right, I'm just changing chairs.
He just slid around the table.
I thought we were booting you out completely. All in favor?
Wouldn't be out of the question.
What's that?
Yeah, wouldn't be out of the question, but that's not the case.
I think, okay. Could we possibly get a new sign for you that says?
Yes, it's ordered already.
Is it ordered? Okay.
Yeah. So then, the next issue is, do we want to appoint that position or go to a special election? And, you know, it just seems like we possibly would have some candidates that we could interview and do a special election, or an appointment, and save that amount. But it's a council decision, because it would just be for the end of my term, which is like the mayor's term until the end of the year.
December thirty-first?
So, I don't know, I would imagine we'd have some candidates we could interview.
Mayor, I know they discussed a special election one time, it was astronomical what it costs to do a special election.
It was very expensive.
Sure save the community a bunch of money if you could get some candidates that really are willing. And we elected these guys, maybe they can make a decision. I don't want them to come.
You know, I think so. I, I don't remember, you know, all the time I'd been on the council, that we ever had a special election to fill an un.
And it would only be filled for one, one year anyway, right?
Yeah.
Not even a full year at this point.
I could see where if we had a couple of candidates and we couldn't come to an agreement on who we wanted, then you would be forced to go to an election.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd need to post it, just to see what comes out of the woodwork.
It does have to be posted.
It does have to be posted.
Yeah.
Yeah, and go ahead and, you know, start spreading the word that we're looking for that and see who, you know, pops their head up, so.
Yeah, because number ten is authorizing the, the city clerk to post that.
Right.
And I guess that would sort of determine how we're gonna to do that.
How many, how many days are we looking at? How many days do we have?
Well, we were gonna try to appoint somebody on the, on the sixteenth, but I think we have sixty days.
Sixty days, okay.
So, if, I'll verify, I know we had sixty days for the mayor.
Sixty days from tonight, from the resignation or from when he turned mayor?
His resignation date on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so last week's.
I thought here a few years back, we had quite a spread and we just decided not to appoint somebody. And that's when Mr. Hibbin left us. I didn't think we had a time limit, we were what, three months from the end, I believe? And we didn't fill that spot because we had to wait till the next election for Steve to be elected.
He was appointed.
You know, I, I feel this position.
He was appointed.
You was appointed to it? I thought you had to wait till the election.
No, he was appointed.
Okay.
And you had at least a year or two years, didn't you, on your appointment?
For, from Rick? I don't know if it was quite a year, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, I guess if it was too much later in the year, it might not make sense. But at this point in time, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to allow Deanne to post that.
We have to do this one first.
Publish it.
Yeah, it's actually another pair.
Then we don't, we don't know whether we're appointing or whether we're going to a special election at this particular point.
You're, just like we did with Dick, you actually make the determination if you prefer to fill the vacancy by appointment or special election. It may come down to this in the end, but you still have to make that vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion to fill the vacancy by either appointment or special election.
You can't do that.
Pick one.
Yeah.
One or the other.
I guess I have a question on it. Who, who gets to sit in on the appointment? If so chose, is it just the mayor or the council decides? I haven't read any ruling on that. About the appointment.
It's, it's appointed by the.
Council.
Approved by the mayor and approved by the council, isn't it?
It's appointed by council.
Yeah, I think it's a council.
Which is a?
Yeah, council.
Pointed by council.
Appointment, I believe. I don't know, you know, it just seems to me like we could get some candidates that we could choose from.
So I'll make a motion that we fill the vacancy by, for Ward Four Councilor, by appointment.
I have another question for you, Deanne. There's a time limit on this as well, right?
That I'm not certain, I'm gonna, um.
It's sixty or ninety, see, I thought it was ninety.
It's sixty, it is sixty if it's the same as the mayor's. So.
My question to you would be, let's just say, look at devil's advocate. Nobody steps up that the council agrees for the spot, does it stay lame till the general? And then it's put on the ballot for Ward Four in the general election?
Those are good questions, I'm not sure of the answers.
I think it's the same as the mayor.
Oh, okay.
If it's not, if, if it's not filled, then I think.
It goes to special election, yeah.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
And, and it could very well be like the mayor's position where if you do decide to appoint, they still have a period of time to file a petition for a special election.
Yeah.
Do you know how many signatures required for council, I know the mayor's.
Fifteen.
Fifteen signatures?
I did confirm that today.
So at least, following up with Lynn's motion to appoint.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. It starts the process, so it, it doesn't preclude a special election, but it starts.
Could have to go to it if you, if it's four of us, it could be two-two, no matter how you end up. And you would have to go to a special election.
Quite possibly. So I have a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So now I would have the request to allow the city clerk to publish the notice.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a request to approve a twenty-eight year agreement with Elk Run for two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars for animal control for fiscal year twenty-two.
Motion to approve request for animal control, twenty-eight year agreement with Elk Run Heights?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a request to enter into a month-to-month agreement with Municipal Solutions to operate the treatment plant until we make a decision who's gonna be the long-term operator.
I, I guess, the question I have on that is, at the last meeting we said, and I see we got, I got information here from the company, how, how long does it re, have you talked to the attorney, if attorney needs to look at it?
Yeah.
I, I think this shouldn't drag on. I just shouldn't get a decision quick on this rather than month-to-month that'd end up being two, three, four, five months. I don't want that.
Actually, I'm hoping that we can make a decision, I'll have the information, I believe by the sixteenth. And that, I, I've checked with both of the potential operators and both feel that that's doable. But we would have to move pretty quickly right after the sixteenth. But I do believe, so I'm going through the different proposals and, I don't know, you know, Charles, if you have some time, you can come in and look at these sometime. Like I told Chris, it's, it's like comparing apples to walnuts, kind of. There's a lot to consider there on who's doing what, who's using what.
Sure.
And so, I, I believe the sixteenth is realistic. And municipal systems, or solutions, excuse me, is Chris Even. And he is here, if anybody has any questions.
At this time, I don't.
I planned on being in touch with Chris to get more of a clarification on, so I can make these comparisons between the two proposals. On just what his proposal involves. Chris and I talked about it a little today, number of hours, who uses what equipment, who owns what equipment. Those kinds of things aren't exactly spelled out and Chris has been helping me kind of sort through the details. So, as I said, I do believe the sixteenth is realistic.
Well, we probably couldn't get in place till probably the first of March.
Well, that's right, that's, that's what the goal would be.
With that being said, I would make a motion that we go ahead and hire Chris Even, a month at a time. So he knows, you know, at the end of February, he could be done, he could be signed for another month. That being the understanding. We could take him forever, we may go with the other.
Yeah, whichever.
Everybody understands that.
Whichever agreement we go with, we're probably going year to year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
And then, as we discussed earlier about the, it's, instead of a thirty day notice, it's only two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
That's how we're approving this.
Yeah, we will, Deanne is mentioning that we would have to modify that agreement. This, this agreement that we're talking about here, with the termination of, of a two-week period of fourteen days.
Well, either that or if we think we're gonna be done by March first, why don't we just, just do it as a March first drop dead date?
Or disapprove it for a month?
Yeah.
And, and then sign a new agreement?
Yep.
That, that might simplify things.
It definitely would.
Send my motion to that, the events is on there then.
That will do it until March first?
So how do you want it stated, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I, I think generally, we'll, we'll just approve the contract with the termination date of March first.
So you're gonna hire him for thirty days?
Yeah.
And that's suitable with Chris. So I would make a motion that we hire Chris Even, what's his company, Multiple Solutions?
Municipal.
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 For thirty days, to end on March one.
Second.
And that works because if on Mar, or February sixteenth, we decide to go with Municipal Solutions,
He's got time.
Do a new contract for going forward on the first of March.
And I think, I mean, we should, we, we've gotta move on on some of this stuff and, you know. So, let's get some stuff done.
Yep.
So, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll be in touch, Chris, I have lots of questions. So along those lines, Charles and Chris shares had a brainstorming session the other day and we kind of came up with the conclusion that the lines have not been televised as quickly maybe as we, we had hoped. And that in order to give our crews some breathing room and get a handle on, on the condition of these lines, Charles had proposed that, that we consider hiring it done. And, and as we were discussing it with Chris, it seemed like a pretty good idea to me that we have the money and it, it could be, what, sixty thousand to clean and televise?
How many feet?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, I was trying to figure that out today, but ran on time.
Yeah, it's about a dollar sixty to a foot, dollar sixty-five, in that range, fluctuate, go back and forth. I'm suggesting that we get three bids, one from Municipal Pipe, one from probably CIT and have you dealt with AccuJet at all?
Yep.
So, so those would probably be the three to, to really look at. It's kind of one of those situations where it's been a, been a concern that we really don't know what's happening underground. And of course, we don't want to be hit with that, you know, we turn around, build a new building or go to Waterloo and then our infrastructure starts crumbling. The age of the infrastructure leaves me doubt that there's, you know, that it's great, you know. You do find lines that are good, you do find lines that are bad, but, you know, there are different ways of fixing it, so. But before we can go to that step, because we were talking about just lining a couple of streets, there are other options that might be a little cheaper in some areas. And you can't find those options when you don't know what you're looking at. You know, so that's, that's the whole thing. Break it down into thirds, that's what the DNR recommends that you do every year, is a third cleaning the city. And every line within that quadrant, which I know that that's what Chris has started putting together now, is trying to get in that, in that realm. And that's what prompted the, the conversation the other day, is because look down on there and there's a hundred thousand dollars for lining, well, what are you gonna line? You haven't seen the lines, you know. So, let's, let's use that money and do the first step of actually seeing what needs to be done and go, go with that, so.
It seems like a smart way to go and the best thing of it is, is that it sounds like we're ready to hit the ground on this.
You guys have all the, you guys have the zones that Chris created a year ago?
Wow, not anymore.
So we're all the way through, he's, he's already televised and cleaned all of the red section. That one, we have all the, that video on file. So I think after talking to Charles, that's what we're gonna focus on with the hired group, was to go into the zone that we've already been in. And then he's got them all scaled out of what year, what zone we're in. So then we'll just move on to our next zone. And we are, you know, slightly behind, so.
And really, the best thing of it is, from my perspective, is I wasn't sure how we had to proceed with this. Did we need an engineer to write the specs? But it sounds like from talking to these two guys, well, you know what I mean. It doesn't seem like we could do anything without an engineer, so that Chris has specs that we can bid and it looks like it's a pretty clear-cut, clean bid proposal. So, really, I'm, I'm asking permission to, to allow Chris to solicit bids from two or, do we have three contractors?
He just said, he said another one.
There are three. And he has everything ready to go, so.
And it'll also help him out in the long run, you know, finding those manholes that you're not sure where they're at, what's going on, when they're actually televised, they actually, you know, go ahead and, and mark every service. So when so-and-so calls and says they're having a problem, they know where to go. You know, so those things will just come straight with just a televised, so, so it'd be a good thing.
And typically then, when they get into that, uh, i- if there's repairs that should be done, they'll identify it or?
Yes.
Potentially repair them?
Uh.
I mean, now for free, of course.
Then it comes back, that hey, this is what we found, you work with Chris, what you're, what you're basically trying to do, that's what we were talking about the other day, was you're basically trying to limit digs, uh, digs are where the money really starts costing you, you know? And there's some, some different things, quit lock, uh, uh, just regular CIPP, you know, point repairs, uh, you know, there are, there. I line a lot of lines that look fantastic, uh, just because an engineer said, well, he thought it wouldn't look fantastic. So, you know, I, it, you know, you can't see through the street, so that's what we're trying to eliminate, spending money where we don't need to, so.
Yeah, no, I think it makes, uh.
Well, we have an idea where, what we think we need to be done in there, so it's gonna be a good, you know, learning experience for us to have, you know, professionals that do this every single day come in and give us their scope of what they wanna do and see how that compares and then see if we can just move on without them, because I'd like to be independent and stick with, you know, using our own equipment and is my ultimate goal.
I'd make a motion we allow to, uh, enter into bids. From a, a minimal of two companies, three if possible.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have one question for you, Charlie.
Yeah.
Are you thinking about setting up a program to where we're gonna, we're gonna start this and we're gonna go through the community and finish it? We're not just gonna do a section of, I mean?
That first section would be done, I mean, the, the, the biggest thing is, and, and the thing that's, uh, you know, kind of a, a, a setback is it has taken a long time to get to this point. We've had the equipment, I think you said, two thousand seventeen. And, you know, uh, any company coming in is gonna finish this in a week, you know? And, you know, and we're kind of sitting there, you know, trying to figure that out. I think it would actually be helpful, uh, probably for Chris to spend a little bit of time with them while they're doing it. Uh, because a lot of it's just, you know, picking it up, knowing what you're looking at, how it's gonna work, you know, how the lay of the land. You know, is this piece of tile, uh, something that can be cut out with the cutter? Is it not able to be cut out with the cutter? A liner only needs a hole. And if it's an eight inch hole, you know, you have, you have different situations. You get involved with engineers and they always want everything perfect, you know? Um, I don't think any of us are really looking for perfect, perfect. You know, it's a sewer line, it doesn't have to be real pretty. Uh, you know, there are some towns where I just work directly with the city and they're like, their first question is, can you line it? You know, sure, we can line it, it's gonna be ugly, but it's still gonna be eight inches, you know? So, you know, there, there's two different ways of looking at it.
What's that old adage about just has to run downhill, kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much. Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe how much people spend sometimes to try to be pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a big difference between pretty and usable, so.
And if you do this, if we do this, then this could possibly stop a lot of the INI penetration.
It actually stops the INI, uh, it also will help, uh, it's a standalone pipe. Um, in other words, if your top pipe is gone on the outside, it's still rated to handle. Uh, it's basically like putting a piece PVC in the ground, you're just cooking it underground. It comes in a resin form, uh, on a felt bag, it's actually inverted into the line and then steam cooked into place. You know, so it's, it's pretty neat. And then, then you come in with a, uh, with a robot and open all the services. Another thing that you eliminate are services that aren't needed, houses that have been knocked down and nobody ever put plugs in. Um, and that type thing, because that can cause a lot of INI issues. Um, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, during the whole wastewater thing that we did get into the INI. Because the wastewater plant only came up because we were over a million, a million gallons. And that put us into the Nutrient Reduction Act, uh, our, our study. Uh, that study basically states if you're over a million, well, in reality, lining cuts down, uh, about thirty-five percent of your INI in town. That would put us below a million.
Generally, we run below, we're five hundred thousand, that's what our average is, if, if there's no, which we've been really wet, our water table's been really high, so we've been.
Yes, the rain areas.
Yeah, bouncing on that million mark, but seven hundred thousand, but.
But, uh, you know, going, going back to your question, do you see this continuing? I think, I th- I, I think that Chris has given a pretty good, uh, you know, pretty good answer to that. I, I don't think once he gets ahead that he's gonna look back, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely have a better idea, instead of having a bunch of little snapshots, we'll have a, a big picture.
So.
View of it. So we had that motion passed?
Yep.
Okay, uh, something really important, the, uh, citywide garage sale. Set for?
I did it last year and I'm doing it one again this year, on Friday only though.
Yeah?
It's a big business that day.
Uh, so I, I need a motion on the?
I'll make a motion to set the date for citywide garage sale for June fourth, fifth and sixth.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so I need a motion to set the date for the, uh, citywide cleanup for June eleventh and twelfth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, we're going into some budget discussion. I'm gonna let Deanne lead this discussion.
The only thing that we really changed is there was some, we needed some direction as far as, uh, really what the parks was gonna do and what their projects entailed, um, and we just asked a lot of questions. We left the revenue item in there, these are the only two things that changed in the, the whole, uh, general fund budget, the rest of it hasn't changed at all. Um, and long story short is we're gonna do the LawCon grant, still, uh, seek that out and that's gonna be seventy-five thousand projected revenue. But, um, one of the things that we discussed as part of the two grants that we got this year, um, and some of that might be carryover, but there was gonna be, um, we were working the grants together so that, you know, uh, say Angels Park, that playground equipment, that some of those funds to use towards that playground equipment were gonna be used against the Black Hawk Gaming Grant. So there was potentially gonna be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars left over, um, from those two grants in that project from this fiscal year. I highly recommend that, um, we just, uh, do the deficit and take out of reserves because ninety-nine point nine-nine percent are gonna be there from what was left over from this year.
To, to add to that, we're also going to try to seek a, um, gambling, um, grant as well. Naturally, we're, we can't, we're too late for the spring, so we're gonna try for the, for October to also go into play with this as well. Uh, with the two projects that we've got going on down at Deerwood right now with the sewer. And then, uh, we met with the engineer last night and it appears that the electrical upgrades that we needed to have done is probably a little worse than what we thought it was. Um, they're recommending to upgrade, we've got three panels down there that were two hundred amp panels. And Roger has had to put fans on them this past summer to keep them from popping, that's how warm they were getting. So they looked at those and we thought maybe it was just a slight upgrade, so they're suggesting that we go to six hundred amps for each one of those.
A, a single, sim- six hundred amp?
Yeah. So we're looking at three six hundred amp panels extra now in, in the park. And those will also have to be, especially the one down by the lift station will have to be raised up. Because that's, right now, that would be the lowest, you know, six hundred amp panels, just like the four hundred amp that we raised here a year or so ago to get it out of the floodwaters, those are expensive to, uh, replace once they get wet. So those will have to be elevated as well. The electrical that is being run right now to the lift station down there comes from one of those panels down in the lowest part of the park. So the other part of this electrical is to move the wiring from that up to the panel that is up by the shower house. That sits a lot higher and that's almost. We don't have to raise that, I don't believe, too much in order to make sure that it stays dry during the flood. Um, we've been pretty lucky over the years with FEMA. They've given us money to help fix a lot of that, but the question is, is how long are they gonna do that? So, I think for the city, we kind of need to be a little proactive on some of this stuff and fix it where we can. But yet, still maintain the services for campers that we got down here.
So we were trying to get, uh, Deanne and I were trying to get, kind of on the same page as far as terminology. Really what you're talking about this year is improvements and not expansion.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes, the expansion part, that's, that's a total, another phase. And after listening to the engineer last night on the sewer and the electrical, it's pretty much, uh, apparent that this, the expansion part is probably gonna be held off for a couple of years at least.
Yeah.
You know, until we can get this done.
A- and so, uh, Travis was here last meeting and he said that, that you potentially would be doing, improving thirty-six sites?
Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven sites that will be upgraded to full hookup. Um, right now, we cannot keep a full hookup site empty. As soon as a trailer pulls out, there's another one in that's goes right into that spot. That spot's not even cooled off yet from the first camper and it's, we cannot keep full hookup sites open. Um, a lot of our seasonal revenue comes from our full hookup sites. So that in itself will be an added plus for our seasonal campers. I think we're up to right now twenty or twenty-two seasonal campers. And, I mean, it's, it's growing every year. We've got good people down there that are running the campground right now that people are very pleased with how they're doing it. Uh, Brent and Heather are doing a tremendous job, Roger and maintenance guys keeping it mowed, cleaned and so Deerwood's getting a pretty good name for itself, I mean, it's obvious with the revenues up and brought in last year, last season.
And, and those improvements will be done at the end of the season?
They would have to start, what we're looking at is prob- if, when we start this, probably, um, starting down at the lift station in October, because that way there, we still have ways to get people in and out. And then by the time that the campground is closed, they would then be up to a point where they would have to, we would have to empty those sites out, so. That's what we're looking at. And then hopefully we get a good winter that maybe they can continue to work through the winter and if not, then they have to come back in this spring. We'd have to keep those sites cooled off until they're finished.
Uh, so we were a little nervous last time when we saw the money in there for?
I, I had put that in there, that two hundred and some thousand, and I'm just ballpark figure and I had put that in there before I had brought it to the board and, and also to here. And just as a way of, I didn't wanna lose that money that we've got in there right now because of, of the extra projects that we've got going on. I knew we had money left over and I wanted to make sure that that money was still there. I just threw a ballpark figure out there, out there, I wasn't real sure what the amount was. I knew it was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and some thousand, so I just kind of put a, a number in there. And I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but, um, I kind of got snowed in in Texas, it was a terrible thing, but.
Yeah, I can imagine. Uh, uh, but so I, I got the consensus that everybody felt pretty comfortable with the lower dollar, uh, improvements that we're talking about and the fact that you actually have some cash to start the thing. And it's not gonna require a huge amount from us, from the tax asking, so.
Tom, I have a question for you. Uh, from what I see on your budget here today and what you have left and, uh, am I hearing tonight that the two hundred and ninety thousand that's in your budget from this year in grants and money and funding and stuff is already allocated for something else rather than this Intertag grant that you wanna apply for?
Yes, we've got, um, Myers, the playground at Myers Lake it's for you.
How much is that?
One thirty-seven.
Hundred and thirty-seven?
Yep.
Travis and, and Deanne are working pretty close to that, Travis is, we're hoping to be able to do that the same way we did the other parks, as a cooperative purchase. Um, if not, then we've gotta go through an engineer and stuff like that, the lock on, so we're hoping to be able to do it the cheaper way, which is the cooperative purchase.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you're doing, Tom, I guess I'd have my, my next question for Deanne. Uh, well, how many re- how much reserves are we using for this deficit the way this budget is pushed, right now?
Just fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand total?
Yeah.
And the tax rate would stay the same?
Tax rate stays the same.
I'm not a big one for reserve askings, but this seems pretty doable.
Well, and they're gonna be left over, that's the point, they're gonna be left over from this year in that park's budget. Cause we budgeted four hundred and thirty-seven thousand this fiscal year for those playground projects.
How come we have, we have to come with money versus what it's costing? I guess I'm confused how we can have excess money if we had estimates and locations for projects. Why is there some excess left over? I know the hundred and thirty, so I just found that out.
Because the parks department is using, they've received two grants. Black Hawk is, it's kind of confusing, but Black Hawk Gaming, we have to spend three hundred thousand, cause their fifty percent share is one fifty. We've got, we were approved by LawCon for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, their fifty percent share is sixty-eight thousand, six twenty-five. So, we're gonna use that sixty-eight, six twenty-five towards the Black Hawk Gaming Grant. So that we get, you know, cause we have to spend three hundred thousand for that, that's what's gonna cause the excess funds because we'd already budgeted four hundred and thirty-seven thousand for this year. And in-kind services pays, you know, plays a large part in that as well. The city crews, I haven't actually figured the exact dime, but I know they've, just their labor alone has been probably five or six, seven thousand dollars. Removing all the equipments.
What would it take to have a zero, zero line item, nothing out of reserve? What would the dollar amount for downing, what line do you count?
It's gonna go up to about eight point four.
Well, I know we're facing, I know we're gonna be facing tax increases in years to come, things that are going on, I, I understand that. But when we're, when we're looking at budgets, when I look through it and I see what everybody else is having got in there and it, I call it minimum, nominal. And then we're doing this a second year in the parks, I don't have nothing against it, but I've had people asking me why, why always the parks? And, uh, I'm a firm believer in the parks, but I do know, Tom, you, you do bring in money, but you spend a lot of money. So it's not just total green sand.
Well, I guess my, I guess my, my response to those people that say, why in the parks, first of all?
They say always, they always say, they tell me, why is always parks a reserve?
For reserve money?
Well, I mean, for budget, total budgets.
That's a good question, I, I have, that's, that's something you guys have to answer, I don't know, but you have to realize that our playgrounds in this park have not. But you have to realize that our playgrounds in this park have not been upgraded in probably well over fifty years.
I understand.
Okay, and we just got a, a ICAP inspection that basically said that our playgrounds were junk. And either we replace them or we tear them out. And I think if we end up tearing them out, I mean, you look at, uh, Case Bear Heights when we started tearing that out, how many people called and talked to Chris and talked to, uh, Troy down here at City Hall and go, "Hey, what are you guys doing? You're tearing out our playgrounds, what, you know, what's going on?" Well, once they found out they're getting new equipment, oh, okay, that's fine, I mean...
So, I guess my question there would be this year or next year? We couldn't, we wouldn't have to anticipate something of this magnitude next budget time when we're sitting here in January next year that we're gonna be adding these grants and this, this kind of money, matching monies and stuff, where we should be pretty well, have everyone pretty much in check versus your budget can handle it?
I'm hoping so, I mean, it just depends upon if we get grants for that sewer project down at Deerwood and the electrical. I mean, those things that you've, you've gotta look at. And, and we're also looking at to help offset that over the next few years. Is we're looking at, uh, rate increases down there, we haven't had a rate increase probably in five years down there. Um, we've got, um, what the other parks in the county are charging. And we're probably about, for full hookup, we're probably six dollars a month cheaper than the county parks and state parks are for full hookup. And we're probably almost twenty-five, thirty dollars cheaper than K O A. So, we've got some wiggle room there, and we wanna stay cheaper than the other county parks, because, because obviously, you know, we, that's one of the things that we get our revenue from and, and, uh, if they find out we're cheaper, they're more likely to come to us. One, we've got shade, that sort of thing, and some of these other county parks don't have. And plus, some of these county parks, you can only stay for two weeks at a time. So, instead of having to uproot every two weeks, they like to come down where they can stay a month or longer and, um, they'll pay the cheaper rate, because they find out we're cheaper, then they end up coming back every year. So, I envision our revenues, we run in a hundred and eighty-five thousand this year at Deerwood. That's, um, I think that's just for the rentals, that's not including our wood, that's not including shelter rentals, the ice sales and that sort of thing. Um, but I can envision very soon in the future that, that park can, that park could easily bring in two hundred thousand or more, let's eat it.
I'm just never for taking money out of reserves and having line items in there for things that might happen, will happen, did happen, didn't happen. I mean, my only concern, nothing but that, or, we're, we're facing a lot of things in time to come that's gonna cost the city money. And, uh, I think we need to start being a little proactive, looking at that a little bit more intently than just narrow vision of the things that are going on, uh, because we, we got some big things facing us. Money is gonna be an issue and recovery are gonna be an issue and bonding's gonna be an issue. So, I'm just wanting everybody to be aware of it, think about that instead of just yay and day, and I'm, I'm not against the parks and, and no passing, but I want us to be open-minded that we, we have a lot of bigger things than this than just be putting money out for grants.
Yeah, but you know, uh, from my perspective though, I, I've watched over the years that they just keep building and building closer to self-sufficiency. And I think Tom makes a good point, Deerwood, they gotta get caught up. And, and really, that's what the last few years have been on this equipment. But I can see a, as they keep improving or possibly expanding the park and, and keep this money coming in, they're getting closer and closer to self-sufficiency. Not that they'll ever be or that, I'm not sure the council ever expects them to be totally self-sufficient. But every year that I've been on the council, they've gotten closer and, and it takes less tax money. So, uh, I, I see it sort of, you know, sort of, I definitely see it.
If you take out the hundred and fifty-five thousand and you figure out what we brought in this past season, you'll see that we brought in more money than basically what our budget is.
I, I see it as an investment, really, uh, is what, what we've been doing. And I hear what you're saying, Steve, I think it's a good point. But, but I think they have a plan and they're definitely disciplined. I, I've been skeptical from year to year, uh, especially two weeks ago when I saw that budget, but, uh, that's totally different now, so...
You know, we got that amusement park coming in, I can envision since we're gonna be as close as what we are. I mean, COVID, that's the one thing, COVID, we blew up with COVID. Because everybody went out and bought a camper. You couldn't go to any place, what'd they do? They went out and bought a camper. Where are they going? They're going campgrounds. So, we probably gained probably between, what would you say, Deanna, maybe fifteen, twenty thousand since the season before this year? And with that amusement park coming in, I can see it going up even more. Especially they find out that we're as close as what we are, that they can bring their camper in, they can spend a week and have a vacation, go to the amusement park, you know?
That's a hundred million dollar amusement park.
It's supposed to be bigger than Adventureland. And, 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 you know, I think if, if that wasn't going in, I think I would have a hard time coming to the council and asking for this. But I think we can't just sit idly by and watch the revenues go to other parks in town, especially K O A, which charges even more than, quite a bit more than we do. Once they find out we've got cheaper prices, they're gonna, they're gonna end up coming to us because we're the closest park to the amusement park.
Are you, are you gonna look this year in your board as far as maybe raising your fees or you're working on your own to...
We're not, what, what we have promised, especially our seasonal, seasonal, um, campers, is that we, we, you know, we give them a year's notice that we're gonna raise the rates. And the reason for that is, is when we raised the rates five years ago, we had a big backlash of people. It was like at the last minute, right before the season opened, you know, everybody's got their budgets going and everything like that. And we ended up losing quite a few campers because of it. So, we sat down and we said, "We're gonna give, especially our seasonal campers, we're gonna give them a year's notice." So, come April first, when they come in here at our meeting, the first of April, and they start signing up for their seasonal spots, we're already, next month, gonna have a plan that, okay, April first next year, not gonna be the sixteen hundred, it's gonna be a different amount and the prices are gonna go up. And we can explain to them, "This is the reason why, we're, we're bringing in more full hookup sites. We're expanding the electricity down there." You know, um, I've got MediaCom right now looking at what it may cost to bring in a better wifi system and maybe even cable service to the full hookup sites. Um, I got another contact that, um, besides MediaCom that we might be able to use to bring in especially the open air wifi and improve on that, which that alone is a big thing for campers, well, it's a big thing for anybody. I mean, you go anywhere and everybody's got probably four or five different devices, they always gotta be connected to the internet. So, that incentive in itself also would be huge as well. So, we're looking at different things, so hopefully we can keep this revenue going. And when we get to a point, hopefully that we decide to do this expansion that we wanna do around the lake, that'll be basically, we'll have the customers ready to come in and take those spots.
So, any, any other questions, comments on the budget overall? Uh, we're, we're on a fairly strict timeline at this point now.
So, the next, we'll, at the next meeting, we'll be, we'll have, we can have another budget discussion. Um, but we are setting the date for the Max Levy hearing, because once we set the date for the Max Levy hearing, hold that hearing, then we have to set the date for the final budget. So, that all has to be done by March thirtieth.
So, it's looking right now the way the budget is tonight, seven point nine eight, seven point nine four.
Mm-hmm.
Utilizing a hundred thousand in reserve.
Mm-hmm. You know, I understand that it is gonna be there, because there's that leftover money from the park's equipment. Even if we did get Angels Park, which we're hoping, if we get Angels Park done this year, it's still gonna be left over from this year's budget. So, it's not, it's not decreasing our reserves from what was already budgeted.
So, some of that though is based on the assumption that the Lockon grant will happen.
Yeah.
And it definitely will happen, it's just, um, they had a bunch of things changed because of, basically because of COVID held some things up. And, um, the grant writer and the domain officer, she just has to rewrite those grants. Once they're rewritten, then it'll be sent out to the...
And to help us out, we've asked Deanna to get ahold of Gaming also and see if they will give us a, a short extension as well because of COVID and that sort of thing. And hopefully they'll be able to do that. If they can do that, then all this should come into play, come into place just the way that we're hoping that it would.
So, thanks, Ben. When do we have to have the, uh, public hearing on the budget?
We'll have that the first meeting of March. There's two now, we have to have two. The Max Levy hearing, that's a new requirement by the state last year, and then our regular budget hearing. So, we'll have both of those in March, it has to be, both of them have to be finalized by March.
Oh, in March?
In March.
Okay.
So, it, it's not that, uh, discussions are over by any means. If anybody's got any concerns or suggestions, uh, we still have time to work on those. I have to say, of course, I, I'm not a vote now, but i- if we were looking at, uh, from my perspective as a council member, if we were looking at more than having to borrow, uh, or use fifty thousand from reserves, I would be boosting the tax rate a little bit. But it's only fifty, so, uh, it, it seems pretty doable. And it keeps everybody pretty happy with, with the existing tax rate.
I think generally that, uh, all of the department heads have done a pretty good job on the askings. Uh, especially, you know, when certain departments, uh, come in ten thousand dollars less than they were last year. It, uh, pretty impressive that somebody's doing some work.
Yeah, well, I'm always nervous about spending reserves and this past year was a good example. We were lucky, but some communities were just devastated, uh, by the, uh, pandemic. So, w- we, uh, we were lucky.
But we've had some pretty good leadership on that as well for quite a few years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, if there's no other...
That's crazy.
No other discussion on the budget, we'll go to, uh, public comments. John?
When they ask the street to shut them one thing, they did a great job on plowing that snow out on East End this last snowstorm. But where were you at when we had the ten and a half inches? You didn't plow that street out for two and a half days after the storm? Don't tell me you did, because I had nothing piled in my driveway, period. And if the ten and a half snow, inches of snow, I should've had it piled up that high in my drive.
Yeah, we did everything twice.
Did everything twice.
Yeah, we just started before it, uh, quit snowing.
A lot plowed it all out, all the way to the driveway, out into the street. And I never had one bit of snow plowed into my driveway after that. And there was nothing plowed in my driveway up until then. And about two and a half days later, you guys plowed it out. Somewhere along the line, they missed East End for quite a while. Guarantee it.
I disagree, but...
Well, I mean, I live on the street, I know what it looks like after they plowed ten inches of snow into my driveway when they come down the street. And I never had any in it.
I understand your concern.
What?
I understand your concern.
Uh, and there's sure no one that plowed it out of my driveway and put it up along the street, so...
We hit everything twice.
Yeah? Must've been awfully well packed down after you came back through with ten and a half inches of snow.
Possible.
Any other comments? So, for the, uh, mayor and council reports, uh, the main thing I have to report is, uh, as I said last time, the last meeting, I, I wanna try to nail down what direction we're going in on the, uh, treatment plant. So, I, I still am, am, uh, in the process of setting up, uh, a meeting with Waterloo and our engineers and hope to, it, it won't be on the sixteenth, but at the March meeting, have more for us to consider. Uh, you know, I tell you, the more I have thought about the connection to Waterloo, the more I like it. I, I understand the concerns about control and costs, but environmentally, and it opens up Deerwood Park considerably, um, it, it just seems to make a lot of sense. So, uh, again, it's not my decision, but I, I hope to, that we can have some serious discussions and nail that down.
I think everybody's open to it, we're just trying to get some type of, uh, structure to what they're looking at. Instead of, instead of these, these are what we think, this is what it might do, you know? We, we need to know some type. Now, I know that they can't give us, you know, hey, this is gonna do this, you know, every year. I know that they're, they're dependent on their council the same way Evans does. Uh, on the other, on the other hand, we're a customer at that point.
The what?
We're a customer at that point. But we're also a customer that just spent eight and a half million dollars to get to them that does us absolutely no good for anything else. You know, so, so that's why, that, that's, that's, that's why we've really gotta look at, at the future of it. You know, not today, not saving money today, not saving money tomorrow, but ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. Because you can take that eight, eight and a half and go, you know, in a second.
Yeah, absolutely, but you can take that ten and a half same time. And, and it'll be an ongoing, it's not like any one of the choices that we make. W- we make that, uh, uh, investment and it's over. All of our infrastructure is an ongoing cost. And, and so it's gonna be some hard decisions, but I certainly don't think, uh, the Waterloo option is, is a bad one. We have the best numbers available at this point.
Yeah, I'm a little scared about the Invesecry offer.
Yeah.
You know, and then what's it gonna be after five years, of course, I probably personally won't care. But, uh, looking down the line for the other people, you know? I made the statement at the last meeting, last Tuesday night, that I had not had one person talk to me about they wanted a new plant. I've had eleven calls this week. I don't know where they're seeing, what must be, is our televised, televised stuff still going out? Are we still being televised so people can see it?
It did last time.
It, it was a malfunction this time, it is.
Okay, but I've had eleven calls of people that want a new plant. And what they want is a vote of the citizens. They want a special election, let the citizens decide what it's gonna be. That's the calls I'm getting.
Uh, you know, I can appreciate that, uh, but for one thing, we don't have a lot of time. So, w- we're gonna have to make some decisions on how we move and, and eliminate the different choices if, if that's what's all about.
We've been saying that for two and a half years. We've got to get moving, we still don't have a price from Waterloo.
We, we, yeah, we've got all the latest numbers from Waterloo in that, everybody's got the chart. Those are the latest numbers we have, those are projections.
Get them, get, get, get a percentage that they can go up per year or per five years or whatever. And then, and then, and then I'll agree with you. If they're not willing to make that type of commitment to us, if they're asking for a commitment from us to them... a commitment from us to them, we should be able to ask for some type of commitment in return.
Absolutely.
And that, and that could go one way or the other. I'm not saying that Waterloo's a bad, a bad, you know, situation. I'm just saying that, that if this can't be a one sided, hey, it's a little, little old Evansdale and, you know?
No, uh, no, I hear what you're saying and I agree. Uh, really what we have is just engineers' numbers, projections, uh, uh, of, of what it could be. We haven't even overlaid the legal aspects on it. And, and that I think would address some of everybody's concerns. That there is no way we're gonna be allowed to, well, be cheated or, or overcharged. We're gonna have to have some long-term, ten, twenty-year agreement on this with, with basic percentages and, and that sort of thing. We're not going into this willy-nilly. I mean, we're certainly not gonna rely on the engineers to make the deal for us. Uh, we're gonna have to take a look at those numbers and we're gonna have to then, like I said, overlay our opinions and the legal, uh, requirements of it.
Have Mayor Hart, uh, presented to his council yet?
Mayor Hart has not, but Randy Bennett has. Uh, he, he's the Public Works Director and he's invited me over to take a look at the plant, their facility, which I'm gonna do, uh, without the engineers, it's gonna be just, I believe, Bennett and I, and, and I'm gonna try to be as frank with him as I can about our concerns. We, we don't wanna, and as you said Charles, spend eight and a half million dollars and all of a sudden we're a prisoner.
Yeah.
To, to somebody else's rights. Nobody wants that and I don't think they do either. Uh, I don't know, I, I have faith in Waterloo. The, the problem is, is that it might be out of their hands too. Uh, they might have other requirements that we're not even looking at at this point that they're gonna want us to help pay for. That's part of what everybody's concerned about. But we have determined that, uh, part of their biggest problem is, I understand it, is the collection system. We're not buying into any part of that. Our, our deal is strictly the treatment plant. Uh, and, and as a customer, I believe, and, and I think Gene, you put it last time, or as a partner, a junior partner, a very junior partner. But, um, so those, those are the issues that, once we get the numbers worked out, if, if it looks like at this table, those numbers look doable, uh, we would, we would have a public hearing, we'd, we'd listen to citizens and see what they think. And if everybody thinks it's a bad idea, we go to the next option. But I don't think we wanna kick the can down the road.
I will say that, you know, and, and, and I appreciate everything that you talked about, you know, for your eleven that want the new plant, I can count eleven that don't want the plant. And I do think it's a deciding thing. I would, you know, as far as my side, I'll leave you with this. With Waterloo, we feel like we lose control. That's everybody's problem. That's everybody's, you know, if we could just pump it over there and they say, well, you know, you're just gonna be paying the same price as Waterloo residents, but, you know? Because then they have the backlash that's gonna keep that price held to a certain percentage, right? You know, and then you turn around and then you got the new plant. You're, you're killing the, the Death's Dolphins, which is unbelievably popular, you know? You're, you're, you come straight into a, to a sewer plant, it's not always gonna be the shiny, you know, the shiny thing sitting there, you know? Um, that type thing, and I look at it differently. I look at it as our existing plant, we can control cost on our existing plant. We're in compliance right now. We're in compliance, that's all we gotta be, is in compliance. You know, uh, you add as the compliance level gets, needs added. You redo your clarifiers, you run as efficient as you can, you know? And, and do that until, you know, they decide to get done with the study. The thing that just amazes me is that all these towns are jumping up and down because of a study. This study's not even completed. This study might get done and they say, hey, we can't even get down to that point. You know, it's a study.
Yeah, uh, so I, I think we're, we're making progress.
I think so too.
But, uh.
And I, and, and to be honest with you, I hope that Waterloo's numbers look good. I hope that we can get some assurances that'll make us feel a lot better about it, but that is the, the, the problem is that you're kinda going, okay, you know, you're kinda letting it go.
Yeah. So, uh, that's kinda where we're at. It, it's gonna be some hard decisions and hard discussions, but I, I'm hoping, possibly in March, we're gonna be busy in March, but let's just say in the next couple of months, have that, that first decision, which is, I believe, since, uh, I, I'd mentioned this before, Troy had kinda started this discussion and with Waterloo and, and I, I was on board and I assumed the, the council was too. So I feel like we need to invest in time in that and, and I support it now as I, I understand it better. Let's go through that one first and if that one doesn't work, uh, number wise or public feedback or however the council feels, we'll move to the next one.
I'm, I'm, I'm in support of going to Waterloo, my problem is we don't know if they will take us. That's the answer I want.
Yeah.
When we get that answer, that they will take us, then I'll get serious about which way I wanna go. Right now, it's like looking into the wind and it all gets in your face.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, well, I'll try to get that nailed down, yea or nay? So, uh, anybody in the council got any concerns, comments?
I would hope that we get a lot more dialogues from Waterloo about user fees to the citizens. They got that three point six two percent in there, if they decide to spend twenty million next year renovations, we're gonna pay three point six two into the grass. Uh, we need to have rumors on that, is that gonna be four hundred thousand every year? Or what's it gonna, there are just so many. I can't support the Waterloo deal and I didn't support the deal when Mr. Bailey brought it up, because there's too many unknown answers and the people who are responsible too, we, we gotta know what's it gonna cost the consumer in Evansdale if we do it and what's it gonna cost us and what's gonna be the guidelines to the project. We know none of that.
Well, we do though, we have the engineers' projections, they're on that graph.
Of the?
For Waterloo, uh, rehabbing the existing plant and a new plant, those rates are there. The interesting thing is, we talked about, is that, you know, twenty years down the road, those rates are all about the same between the three options.
Well, actually running.
Because that's what, where sewer rates are going.
Running, running, running your own plant, it happens slower, you know, those rates, those rates creep up slower.
Yeah.
The new plant, they creep up real fast, because of course you got all that cost involved. Uh, you know, utility rates go, you know, thirty percent higher, you gotta hire more guys for running the darn thing, so, you know, those, those rates creep up really, really fast. Uh, so it depends on the way that you wanna look at it. I mean, but if, if, then again, at the current plant, we can stay in compliance, you know? I, I, believe me, I work in the industry and all it is, is, I mean, all we're doing is treating crap. Doesn't have to be gorgeous, doesn't have to be a Cadillac, as long as that water comes out and tests a certain way, that's all you care about. And I think a lot of, a lot of times people get caught up in the, you know, the Cadillac or, you know, hey, let's do this and it'll last us longer. It's not gonna last you longer, you're still treating the same stuff.
Yeah, the only concerns I have there is, I, I mean, the physical part of the plant is fifty years old and I, I'm very familiar with fifty-year-old concrete and brick and so there are some, some concerns there that I would have, uh, if, if I'm making that decision. That you can only rebuild so much on that and, and, uh, you know, you invest, and we can have this conversation later too, but you invest ten and a half million dollars and, or maybe not even that, maybe we can buy cheaper.
Before you make that decision, do yourself a favor, go to Knoxville, Iowa.
Do what?
Go to Knoxville, Iowa and tour their plant. The plant was built in nineteen forty-one. It looks fantastic.
Yeah, well, well, you know, I can check on that.
And it's the same concrete.
We'll get some numbers on that.
You know? Uh, they did a, they did a refurb on it and the price tag was around six and a half. Is that all new equipment too then? Yeah, they actually just replaced all the innards of their clarifiers and. See, I, right now I'm at, at the sewer plant is, it, we've only got two options as far as I'm concerned. It's either we hook up to Waterloo, we build new. We play, going down to that fifty, sixty-year-old one down there, I, I'm not interested in that period, uh, but I figure that my term will be over by the time we vote on where we're going, so.
Well, yeah, quite possibly, quite possibly.
I hope you guys make a decision before that.
Yeah, but, um, so anyway, I, I, I think we've got plenty to, uh, to think about the next couple of weeks.
You got your work cut out for you when you go over and talk to them because.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of interesting because it, it's really, I'm getting up to speed on a lot of this stuff, so Charles may know it and Chris may know it, Deanne probably knows a whole lot more than I do about it. So it, it is interesting taking a look at how we can make this work, so, you know.
It's a hard, and it's a, it's a very hard decision. And then, you know, I, I would implore you, it's the most boring read I've ever had, but when you read the nutrient reduction strategy book, I mean, one of the very first paragraphs is, is, is it financially feasible for the community? That we want you to do this if it's financially feasible. I'm sorry, fourteen to sixteen million dollars, is it financially feasible for Evansdale?
As Evansdale is now, but see, you have to look at sixty-four acres of new development too, into the equation.
Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, there are, there are other things, we do have to look at the future, uh, and, uh, so I'm probably, as far as you're talking about nutrient reduction, I'm probably more into the, the big picture thing than, uh, waste flows and that sort of detail. Uh, anybody have any, any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second word adjourned.